Call this committee to hold to order. Um, soon as the CED staff decides to be a little quieter. All right, we're going to call this committee to hold to order. We have one item on the agenda and it is a biggie, very important. We have a report back from the Citizen Advisory Committee for Parks, Trails and Community Facilities. Uh, Tim, Bob, take it away.
Well, thank you. We are here tonight, as Councilman Ed said, we're presenting our, the results of our committee work over the last, gosh, it's been, what, four or five months now, which we'll get into a little bit later.
It was a year, wasn't it?
It feels like a year, Bob says. Like Ed said, I'm Tim Searing and I've lived in the city of Renton for about forty years now, and if I could tack my wife's citizenship in this city, it would be sixty years. I'd like to introduce some of our committee that are here. I think there's Brian. Brian and Jeannie, Al, do I see Jeff come in?
Hi.
There's Jeff. Jeff right over there. So these are the folks, some of the folks that worked with us on the, on the committee. So, we're here to present, like I said, and you are fortunate tonight because this is what we studied and this is not what we're going to give you tonight, there's so many words in there. So.
Okay, my name is Bob Reader and I've been in the city for four years, um, and if you count my wife's tenure, uh, it's longer, but, um, neither here nor there, huh? All right, so, um, this was a team effort by a bunch of people that spent a lot of time. I'm glad that some of them were able to make it tonight, it's great to see them. Tonight, we have a pretty straightforward, I gotta apologize right up front that we have thirty-six slides on this deck, but we're going to try to get through a lot of them. I know, grown, right? Anyway, tonight's presentation's really three things. We're going to talk to you about the mission that we had, the process that we used, and the recommendations that we came up with. And this bears going through in some detail because I wanted to get us level set on where we were with mission, so I'm going to read it if you don't mind. This is a subset of the mission that we had, but identify important gaps in city parks, trails and community facilities and make recommendations for additional investments, working with the city's Park Recreation and Natural Areas Plan, which we call the PRNA, fondly call the PRNA, the Trails and Bicycle Master Plan, which is still in process and not approved yet, and the Renton Downtown Civic Core Vision and Action Plan. And you asked us to consider geographic equity and capital costs as well as our maintenance needs for existing and anything we propose for new or expanded facilities, and identify our criteria that we are using for recommending these things, and present a prioritized list of projects totally no more than seventy million dollars. And that we are going to do. We were able to get all that done. So this slide shows really, this is one of the things that were shown to us, which is the three-legged stool. You know, the city's been purposeful in its three-year plan, uh, and its vision and for financial sustainability, and you've got the BNO thing behind us, we have the RFA behind us, and so now we're focusing on the third leg of the stool, which is quality of
So, let's talk about the process a little bit. We, uh, here we go. We had eighteen members, we started out with eighteen members selected by the council. We ended up with fifteen, three had to drop out because of family issues, business issues or other issues. We met nine times over the last, well, since January, so five or so months. Each of those nine times were two-hour meetings. We explored all the data that the parks gave us, believe me, I'll reference it again, it was here. It was plenty. And again, like Bob said, is that our basic task was to consider the projects in front of us, and we'll talk more about those in a minute, but distill that down to about a seventy million dollar list of projects, cost of those projects. We have a great, as you know, a great park system in this city, it's one of the things that we're known for. So just to reiterate, you can see the slide, we have about twelve-hundred-and-forty-three acres, with fifty-seven percent of those acres are undeveloped. We have thirty-two developed parks, twelve miles of trails, forty-five fields and sports courts, twenty playgrounds, eleven picnic shelters, quite an impressive list really for a city our size. We maintain the park system, our parks, I should say, twenty-four and a half FTEs, full-time equal employees. We have an operating budget of six point two million dollars and a capital budget of four point one-five million dollars for the recent year.
So our residents actually support our parks. In the last study that we had that was statistically valid in two thousand and eleven, they told us that, um, that they loved the park system, and actually, one of the strongest things in the, in the poll was that over ninety-one percent of the people said that they really wanted us to improve the existing facilities. Now, we take also residential surveys or resident surveys that are not statistically valid, but they're still anecdotal and they're still important to listen to, and the last one was two thousand and seventeen, nine out of ten households or ninety percent of the people contacted had visited a park in the last twelve months, and fifty-eight percent had visited a city-run trail. I'm one of them. But we do have some areas of concern, there's a lack of land for new parks, and that's going to be a continuing problem as the city grows, uh, there's a lack of a certain type of recreational facilities, dog parks, community gardens, that sort of thing. There's a geographic distribution of parks that's not ideal, especially in the south end of Renton, and then growing backlog of major maintenance, which was a major concern for our committee when we got into that. This slide is a little bit, I don't expect you to see the wording on the slide, but I do want you to point out a couple of things. It shows our population growing faster than our park acreage. So the brown line shows our population, and you can see the annexation in two thousand and nine, where we jumped up significantly. And the blue line is a ratio, it's the, it's the acres per thousand residents, so obviously if we increase population and keep the acreage under management the same, then that's going to decline. That has started to decline, twenty-three percent of the population increased in two thousand and nine and acreage has increased in two thou, since two thousand and nine at one percent. Now, this is only one measure, and it may not be the most important one, but it is a measure, it's a stake in the ground, and it's something that we ought to figure out how, if we're going to hold ourselves accountable to this, or what other measurements we feel are important. So, you asked us to start with the three prior strategic plans, the one that's still in process of being approved and the two that we've already talked about a couple of times, the, um, and we did that. So we went through the major, the major piece of work that has the bulk of this stuff is the P, uh, PR, the PRNA, doesn't roll off my tongue, but the PRNA, which has got the subset, or the overview of all of the projects really that are in the park, uh, target. And the staff, our city staff screened out the projects that were nearing completion or too speculative to actually, um, put on the project list right now, and we got that down to forty-four viable projects for two-hundred-and-seven-point-eight million in two thousand and eighteen dollars. That was what we started with, to whittle that down to hit the, um, target that you asked us to hit. And also looking at the capital improvement program for the park division, we found that they have been a little bit short of capital, as is everybody probably, but twelve point nine million dollars in, in major maintenance of existing facilities that we felt needed to be addressed. So, you'll see in our recommendation what we've done with the forty-four projects plus what we've done with the major maintenance.
So, we started out after we did our fire hose study of all of the previous plans and what we were trying to, uh, to consider. We then decided that we needed to come to a common vision of Renton Parks. What did we think the parks meant to us and the city of Renton? So, we, um, why did we hit this back? So here are bullet points, and I'll be quick, you can read them up there. Be a source of civic pride. Serve the recreation needs of all the residents. Be a reflection of the city's commitment to making Renton a great place to learn, live, oh, I got it out of order, live, learn, work and play. Be in excellent condition, safe and thriving. Help grow a sense of community and build partnership between the city, other government agencies, business and local, uh, community groups. And an example of that are, is our Metta Crest Playground up in the Highlands, where we have teamed up with the Renton School District to build a, a common playground for the school as well as the park. An additional one that I would, I've been involved with a bit, was our, our summer lunch program, again partnering with the school district as well as, as well as our parks.
So, y'all know what a word cloud is? This is a word cloud. This came from the, for the love of Renton, so this is the, the last three components of our vision, so this is number six, which was to highlight Renton as a regional recreation destination. If you look at that word cloud, obviously the one that jumps out at us is Coulon Park, but then if you look through all of them, over fifty percent of those words are under the care and management of the park department. So when people associate Renton, whether they're our citizens or other citizens, they, they value and they look at us as a destination for parks, which brings in people that hopefully will spend money with our businesses. The last two, because of the popularity of trails and with our residents, um, uh, we really wanted geographic equity of, um, and that's one of the things that we valued and tried to achieve, and the last thing is to, while we value geographic, um, oh, let me back up. While we value geographic equity, uh, diverse, and the diversity, it only makes sense to centralize, and we did, you'll see that in the recommendations, centralize the specialized facilities. So that's our vision that we used, and then you asked us for our priority, how would we prioritize these projects? And these are in no order except for the first one. The first one, we said, this is the top priority that everybody in the committee agreed, that we have to take care of what we have. And the rest of those are not in any, any rank order of priority, but enhance geographic equity, we've mentioned that. We have gaps in facilities available, we need to address more all-around use, that was heard a lot, especially in ballparks and pools, the viability of a project, a lot of these are not quite shovel-ready, so, uh, some of the projects couldn't be considered to be, uh, put on the docket because they weren't ready to go. And then we really relied on staff to tell us what was important, or what did they see were the, the biggest needs.
So now, we're going to talk about how we did what we did. A bit of a deep dive in the weeds, if you will. We talked about our first four meetings of learning about the parks, our lax was developing our vision and then eventually developing the list. As Bob told you, we started out with a list of, of approximately seventy-three projects that were developed in the three strategic plans that we talked about, and city staff scrubbed out the ones, as Bob said, that were not viable, either they were being built, completed, or otherwise not available to us. So in the end, then, we considered forty-four viable projects that were from the three strategic plans. We had the forty-three major maintenance projects, they're all in the city's current parks, uh, six-year capital budget. And so, how are we going to get to a list of park projects from this universe to something that we can present to council? Well, it was an interesting project, to be sure. But what we all agreed upon was that major maintenance, as Bob said, major maintenance was a top priority for us. That we all agreed on. We all then sat in small groups in our committee, I think some of you were there, I think Carolanne, you were there, Ed, of course, you were there, where we all gathered and decided, you know, how, how are we going to distill all this? How will we get it to where we want to get it? So, we first decided to take all these projects, the forty-three, uh, major maintenance, the forty-four of the scrubbed list of projects, and we all voted on them. We voted on them, uh, scaled to one to five, and one being eh, five being, yeah, that's a good one. And then we distilled that list further into geographic locations. Then we got together and said, we like this set of projects by geographic location. Then we decided, hey, let's take it to the city staff and let city staff comment on our suggestions. Do they like it? Do they not like it? Why don't they like it? Why do they like it? Again, what we found is that city staff agreed with us, of course, on the forty-three major maintenance projects that we needed to get done. So, that, um, got us down to this slide where we all accepted the forty-three major maintenance program, or projects, I think I've said that about four times now, Bob said it three times. I think you get it, I'll stop saying it. There was two other major projects from the forty-four list, I'll call them, that were the May Creek-McCasco Project up in, what would that be, North East Plateau, and then the Philip Arnold Project. So those two were automatically in, along with the forty-three. So how did we decide on the rest of them? Well, it was a simple, well, not so simple, but a parliamentary process whereby, um, one of our committee members would nominate a project, it would be seconded and then voted on. If it didn't get a second, it was deleted and we went on to the next, and so on. And so, we voted on it and it had to have a majority typically more than sixty percent for it to remain on the list. And interestingly enough, as we were doing this project, we didn't consider cost, we just considered the, uh, the project itself. And in that process, we thought, well, we'll come back after we, we get the list developed and we'll have to cut some here or there to get down to our seventy million. Ironically, as you can see on the last bullet point on the slide, we came up to sixty-eight point five million dollars without doing any reconsideration of the project. That included the, the major maintenance, uh, projects. So, that was a, that was a pretty interesting project, and I want to say that it was enjoyable, if you will. Well, maybe not enjoyable, but interesting, uh, in the end. So Bob's got a graphic for you here.
So I haven't seen this since Roberta built it, so, oh yeah, it's going to work. So, we, I'm visual, I'm sorry, you heard all that. This is it, and same thing in pictures, it'll be real quick. We took the three existing city plans, right? That's our input, and then we went through a prioritization process. And based on that, we went back to the city staff and said, what do you think of what we came up with? And they said, well, based on what we know, these should be in, these should be out. So we went back and reprioritized, and that's where we came up with our recommendation. Okay? So it wasn't iterative, and it wasn't done in a vacuum, uh, and it wasn't, we didn't start from scratch, we started from existing plans, but we certainly relied on the people that really know the most, which is our park department, on what, what we should be doing. So here's what we recommend, forty-three major maintenance proj, have we?
Have we set it up?
Looking up on the theme here? We gotta fix this stuff that we already own, all right? We probably don't need to say that more than about four more times, right? Eleven newer expanded park projects across the city and a million and a half in contingency funds. Back to the seventy million, so timing here is key. Major maintenance, uh, we can do in two to five years, they're largely shovel-ready, don't need a lot of permitting, uh, they just have lacked the amount of, of funding that they needed to do. The other projects will require design permitting and, uh, planning, so those are in a little bit longer timeframe. You have in your pocket the list, and I, I could, I could just sum it up, that there's six new parks, and there's three that are significant renovation, and then there's two that are significant expansion of existing assets. And of course, the forty-three major maintenance. And down at the bottom, uh, on this slide, you'll see that we, we threw the, I mean, we didn't want to leave any money on the table, right? So, you said, come up with seventy million, and so there's a, there's a lot of, there's a lot of variables in, in these estimates, they're as good as they can get, uh, but some are going to be high and some are going to be low. And then we have a map that shows the area, and it's not meant to be seen by anybody in the room because it's still small, but that is in the package, it's available to anybody in the audience that wants to see it.
So everybody can dream about those things that they want, but you gotta pay for it. So, how can we pay for it? I probably learned more in the time that I spent with Jan and our group about public finance than I did the entire quarter that I spent in public finance in college at Central Washington University. I'm serious about that. I got a C+ in that class. I hope you get an A on this one. We, we looked at funding options, and, um, when you consider the, the timing of the projects, the attributes of bonds that might be issued or could be issued, um, and then the, the cash flow cost of, of various, um, funding options, we really came down to a levy-lid-lift. We, we figured that, that that would be the most palatable cost-wise and efficiency-wise for the citizens of Renton to accomplish what we have proposed. And you can see at the bottom of the slide, um, we're estimating, again, like Bob says, this is about as close as we could get it, Jan and her group, that it would be nineteen to twenty-nine cents per thousand, and this equates to seventy-three to a hundred and ten dollars per year for a medium home, if you can find a medium home for three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars at this, at this time. We also, something I circled here that I wanted to mention, one of the things that we were concerned about is that we're adding new assets. If we build these parks, we gotta pay for their upkeep, and so we built into this twenty-nine, or nineteen to twenty-nine cents per mil of, uh, of levy-lid lift enough to service those parks. So, we obviously support our park system, been on the park board for many years now. I mean, it's a passion for our city, or it has been in the past. So we've provided the list, and we feel like it's a valid list, but paying for it is another issue, something that obviously you're going to have to decide as a council. We also asked staff if, we didn't get any of this, and, but if we got thirteen and a half mil, or was, no, twenty, twelve point nine million dollars to catch up, all that deferred maintenance on our parks, could we maintain? And they assured us that we could. So, if it is decided by you that the seventy million dollars can't be done now, we really encourage you, as a group, as our committee, am I behind? I got it? To consider somehow funding this deferred maintenance. And we've heard different approaches to it, again, I don't know how the, all the financing works, but if we can somehow make that happen, our parks need it. And that deferred maintenance list doesn't get any smaller year-over-year, as you all know, it gets bigger year-over-year, and we need to catch it up. So we felt very strongly about that and we wanted to make sure that you heard that from us. Any questions so far?
Any questions from council? Keep going.
Okay, well, we're on slide thirty-five, so I told you this wouldn't be that painful. All right? There it is, right there. Great cities have great parks. Now, these, we know, these are difficult issues, and it takes vision and courage to sponsor investments in something that is, is as subjective as quality of life. What's quality of life for one person is quite different than quality of life for another. The value of a park for one person is different than the other, we get that. And there are a lot of moving parts in the city, and they all have needs for resources, we understand that too. Quality of life is not a measure, is not as measurable as response times or, uh, as, um, measurable as crime statistics or as measurable as potholes per, per mile of road. Those are important too, and those are all important things for quality of life. But those become minimum expectations of people. When those aren't there, they get dissatisfied. But people complain when those aren't there, but parks and public spaces are things that people take pride in. So can you imagine what the city of New York would look like today if a hundred and seventy years ago, somebody didn't have the vision and the courage to say, we're going to create a park in the center of this city and build what is now probably the premier park in the world? Or closer to home, how about the Bellevue Downtown Park? You know, with the vision of Park Director Lee Springgate, with the support of Mayor Corey Bozeman and the City Council from Bellevue, they created this magnificent Bellevue Downtown And closer to home, in our own backyard, the great work of Gene Coulon and the support of Mayor Joe R. Baxter and the Renton City Council at the time, to create Renton's signature park. Now, it would have been a lot easier to let this development go on, and these resources would have been lost forever, so I, I'm sure you get that. Renton has the vision, and they have a lot of great work that's already been done, we have plans, we have, you know, we know what we need to do. We have a very competent and capable parks department, and we have a terrific track record. We've done wonderful to this point, and I know we're going to continue to do so. And the City Council has the backing of the Community Advisory Council, Committee, to, and whatever you feel is the best thing to go forward. So Lee Springgate, we tried to find a, a Gene Coulon quote, and I'm sure he would have agreed with this, Lee, and this was on the previous slide, you might have missed it, but I'm going to read it, he said, "Speaking of the Bellevue Downtown Park, this amazing park is the product of exceptional leadership, political courage, exemplary collaboration, and a coherent vision." And we believe we have all of that in the city of Renton. Those are our remarks, so now we have questions.
Any questions from council?
I just want to say thank you. I know how hard this was. I was in some of those meetings, and I know it did get a little heated at times because we're all passionate about different things, we come from different walks of life, we have different priorities. The way you guys pulled together to create this list is amazing, I'm very, very grateful that you guys were willing to commit your time to do this and
Thank you.
...got through all the hard days to make it happen, so thank you.
You're welcome.
So if I may have just a minute more of time, I would like
Please.
...think the city staff, they worked their tails off. So whoever worked with us on this, stand up so we can be recognized. Everybody looks at each other and nobody stands up!
Where's Roberta?
And, and our consultant, Karen. So I have, I have one more thing I'd like to, just a couple minutes. I think one of the things that we've talked a lot about is, is adding our parks, or adding a new park, which is important. You know, we have our trails that we walk on, we have our grass fields, our ball fields, um, but one thing that we really didn't talk about much is the programming that our parks do for our children. And I have personal experience there, and I'm going to relay a couple of those very quickly. My wife, Kimberly, grew up in Liberty Park, and she's a self-described park rat, or rec rat, and she spent her years from eight years old to almost adulthood playing in the parks, participating in that programming, along with many, many, many other children. It made a difference in her life, to be sure, notwithstanding her taste in husbands, but certainly made, made a difference to her. And then I'm going to rotate clear to another generation, and that's my own, or our own son, George, who was, was in who was, was in the, the, the day camps at, 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 uh, the community center, was there for, oh gee, through his probably grade school years, and then graduated to be a counselor, um, in, in the, uh, the day camps. So, and these are not isolated stories. These are personal to me, those that I have experienced, and I know that they've happened over and over and over again. And it doesn't happen, this programming doesn't happen without the facilities to make them happen. So, I would say, please consider that also in your decision-making. Thank you. Thanks for everybody that helped on this deal.
Mr. President?
Yes, Randy.
Yeah, I too, I just want to add my thanks and appreciation to this committee. Um, I, I agree with everything that was said tonight, and I'm really impressed that the committee has, um, so well sort of latched on to the, the feelings of this community. Um, I, I agree with the, the target for, um, you know, sort of the approximate how much you think we could maybe get the community to accept. Um, I, I want to say I really like, when I look at the list, how, how many of the, the parks you've picked out, how many of the projects are, are very central, kind of in the heart of our community, and, and they're ones that, um, that, that everybody's going to be able to access and enjoy, ones that you're going to see when you drive by on four oh five that, uh, and, and some of them go back to property we acquired a long time ago. We've already spent money on Narco, the Narco property, and, and we're actually be realizing the value of that with the projects you've chosen. And I, I love that you've dispersed others through the neighborhoods and that you're addressing the maintenance, and so, a terrific job, and I, I would just want to thank everybody in the committee for investing that kind of time. It's, it's hard to find time, I know, these days, but, um, thank you for doing that, and your, your city really appreciates it.
Ryan?
Uh, yes, uh, I'm always a little slow on the draw, so sometimes what I was going to say gets said, but so I would definitely want to echo, uh, my colleagues up here. Uh, I've served on a, had the pleasure of serving on a couple, uh, advisory committees for the city before, so I can appreciate the work you all did. So, I definitely want to say thank you for, for going through that binder so I did not have to, although I will, maybe a little bit. Uh, whittling down the list is great. Um, I'm looking at this list, and I'm thinking, wow, this is a fantastic list. When we set the out, um, set you with this task, I was like, I was a little worried, you know, where, when we're talking about dividing out the projects among the whole city, are we going to spread the peanut butter too thin and not hit on some of the major core elements? And as, uh, Councilmember Corman said, uh, really love seeing some of the, the central projects in there, yet still you look around that map, and there's a little bit something for, for everybody on there. You know, not by any stretch of the imagination, a comprehensive list of, of the work we can do, but man, is it a great start, and I hope the voters agree.
And I guess I will say in closing, and Kelly, we're going to take a picture, correct?
That's correct.
All right. I'll say in closing, seeing you guys start this at the very beginning to where you've come to, it's been amazing, and, and I want to personally thank everyone on the committee, but I also want to personally thank you, Tim, and Bob, um, as the chair and the vice chair of this group. Um, it was your leadership, in my opinion, that helped to get us to where we are. Uh, so, thank you guys so much for that.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Can I add one more thing? When, when you were sort of describing, and I think it was very fair, the way you described, if, if we don't do this, that, um, you know, we'll be able to maintain what we have sort of the way we've been doing it, but, um, but we, it's a lot of unrealized potential, um, and I, I like this, very much appreciate the statistics about how much the city population's grown, and the parks really haven't grown that much. The other thing I would add is if, if we don't do this, um, there will be a sort of King County-wide, uh, parks, you know, initiative that comes along and, and maybe adds more money to the Seattle Aquarium and does some trails up in Redmond or something, and our voters will be asked to vote on that. And, um, they'll want, they'll wonder once again, you know, why isn't, why isn't more of their tax money being spent right here in town? So, I really like that we're, we're offering, um, a, a way to fund their own local parks, and I think that, you know, the, the timing's good for that. And I, and it's great to have, uh, this committee put so much time in for that purpose, so thank you.
Do we have a photographer? Okay. Kelly, you want us down there up here?
You should do more of this.
You guys did great.
Hey, I hate, hey, oh, yeah. Dennis, do you want to come up here with us?
Angie, I'm going to put my hand on this, so it looks like I'm passing.
Hold on, hold on.
Dennis is coming.
And we're going to try and see if he is here. Not that there's anything wrong with your camera.
No, but we want you in the picture, Kelly.
Oh, no, no, no.
Kelly's here.
And so does Karen.
Okay, smile. We'll take a couple of this way and then, ready? Say, "Good job, thanks, it's over."
Fromage.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
One, just one sec, we'll see if, um...
He was going to come, he'll be right here. So, take some pictures with our professional camera.
Oh, twice.
That means Kelly's got to get in the, uh...
Kelly, just do it as a selfie.
We're just going to...
Kind of a generous style.
Just a second, I'm just going to check the lighting.
I just thought mine went a lot quicker.
Okay, we're almost there. All right. One, two, and three. One more. One, two, and three, Chris is in TV.
Great job.
All right.
Jackie, you going to fix me? I'll just get, I'll get down there.
Tonight, right? We don't do anything tonight, no action.
No.
If there are no further questions from council, we are adjourned. All right?